Okay, Craig Borba.
Here.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
Al Jones.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
David Norgard.
Here.
We're all here.
Great. Okay, Roman numeral two, acceptance of the agenda.
The agenda was supposed to honor before October 12th. And now you all have decided you want to keep it the way it is.
So, okay, okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes, ma'am.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Roman numeral three, public comments. Do we have anybody, Jeannie, that's wishing to make a public comment?
We do. I know Michael Herschel would like to, and if anyone else would like to speak from the attendees area, or just hit the raise hand option, or literally raise your hand. But Michael Herschel, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I have three points I'll make, and I'll make them pretty quickly. First of all, I just want to extend a great big thank you to Jeannie for obtaining this grant that's going to push the library well into the 21st century. We have a lot to be thankful to her for, both the trustees, but the whole community really does have to extend a great big thank you to Jeannie. So, yay, Jeannie, thank you very much. One thing that I think is very important is the speed with which this has to be done because of the time constraints built into the grant. I know we all think that this is, we know we have a number of years to complete this, but you know, the clock's ticking. And I, and one of the most important things that has to occur very, very quickly is for the city to appoint a point person or project manager for this that will be invested in pushing this process along, because there's a lot of decisions to be made, a lot of important decisions, maybe controversial decisions. So the sooner that this person's on board, somebody that has investment in the need for an approved improved library, the better it is. And hopefully, the trustees and staff have some input into who that person can be, and also the trustees and staff have the ability to push the nomination of that person forward. I don't know where it stands now. I haven't heard anything about it. Was that my two, three minutes? No, okay. And then the third thing is, as you know, the the grant only covers infrastructure, infrastructural upgrades or improvements needed to operate the building. It doesn't include any money for upgrading the functionality of the building, the services that are provided. And we all know that that's really a necessary part of this. So I, it's up to trustees, friends, board, and the rest of the community to push the political leaders to make commitments, to sweeten the pot so that those things can get accomplished, as well as, as well as generating funds from the private sector as well. But but that, that's also very important, that we get money. We know we have a lot of unused or underutilized space in the library. And we've got to figure out a way to make, make the library and its current footprint work in a more a way that addresses 21st century needs. And finally, it's the fray building. I never know how to say that fray or fry building. It needs, it needs the money committed to it to work right away so that the the timing with possibly moving library functions over there during the remodel can take place. And I'd like to go on record, and I'm not speaking as a friend, but I think it would be really appropriate for the city to name that building after the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. The Friends, I've been on the board five years, but for many decades, the Friends have been such an integral support for the institution of the library, so generous and helpful with their time and their money. It's just appropriate that building gets named after the Friends, because hopefully, the program for the space is that we can use it for book sales. I'm sorry, book sales, maybe a cafe, offices, whatever functions the Friends can come up with. But it's very appropriate that that name, that that building be named after the Friends. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Michael. Any comments from anyone? Any other comments out there, Jeannie, that we should be sensitive to?
I haven't seen anybody. If you are wanting to give a public comment, please hit the raise hand icon. Let's see. Let me ask. Rebecca, did you, did you want to come through as a participant for the foundation? Yes. All right. Hold on just a second. I'm going to bring you there. Just one second, I'm working on reminding people. Okay, Nancy has her hand raised. So Nancy Morrison from the Friends.
Okay, and as you all know, my name is Nancy Morrison. I'm the president of the Friends. I've been on the board for, I think, 10 years. And I just love the library. It's really important that we make the library representative of what Palm Springs wants their image to be. This library has, is over 45 years old. It hasn't had any significant improvement. And I think it's an embarrassment to the city that you have other cities around us at Coachella, Desert House Springs, they all build these new libraries. And we're sitting here with a library that hasn't been upgraded. I really think this is the time for the community, the city, everyone to get behind the library, and let's get this up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments? Okay, we go to Roman numeral four, consent agenda. Items A, B, and C. Any concerns, anything you want to pull from that item? Very none. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Looking for them here. Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
And for the record, I just recorded Ed McBride and David Norgard as persons. I found that, even though I saw Al had his hand up. With everybody.
Okay, so, thank you. Roman numeral five is administrative reports. First one is A, Friends of the Palm Springs Library. Nancy, are you going to speak to that?
Sure. I'll just give you an update. The library, or the Friends, we recently did a Friends of the Library Does Business As filing with the state, and we are now also known as Palm Springs Speaks. So, working with the library and Julie and everyone involved, we are going to bring Palm Springs Speaks back. It was a very successful venture for us. The city was behind it. So I think this is going to be a great thing. We're looking to have one event in the first quarter of 2023. Also, the library, or the Friends, excuse me, are having at the library, we're having our holiday boutique where we're going to be selling books, CDs. We're going to have about two different, excuse me, two dozen different holiday baskets for sale. And this is going to be on Saturday, December 3rd, from, I believe, 10 to 1:00. So hopefully, all of you will turn out. And this is also a commercial that if you don't belong to the Friends, please join. Membership is $20 for one person, 30 for two. And of course, we do take donations in larger amounts as well. Let's see. And then we also have our events committee are hard at work on getting a home for us to do for modernism in February. So the Friends are hard at work, and we're also willing to volunteer and help with any fundraising events for additional money for the library, because as Michael pointed out, the grants were only for the infrastructure, and we're going to need a lot more than that. That's about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy? Okay, very none. Next item is Palm Springs Library Foundation.
Good evening, everybody. I, my report is the foundation is excited to announce we're doing a Pride on the Page Book Festival, which is an official Palm Springs Pride event on November 4th and 5th. And our celebrity special event is Sharon Glass, who's in conversation with Peter Page. That is going to be Saturday, November 5th, 5:30. We're very excited about that. And in terms of the, the task at hand, the foundation is, as you all know, was formed and is ready to assist the city and the Friends and the library in making this dream of a 21st century library a reality. And we are poised to fill in the gap between the grant and the city budget and what we really want. So I just want to make it really clear to everybody that we are ready, willing, and able to assist in that project. And we're very excited about it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David at this time? Okay, very none. Let's go to Roman numeral five, C, library staff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So we just received notification of the that we received a Zip Books Grant from the California State Library, and they had you got a grant, we don't know the amount, but then we got the information for the amount. So now we have been notified that we've got $14,504. Very specific amount. We're very happy for that. There is just so much demand. Yeah, we got 14,504. And we're also ecstatic that the Friends of the Library had stepped up already and pledged $10,000 to support this program. So we are happy about this. If you don't know about Zip Books, it's a program where you as library patrons can request items that we don't own at the library, and then the item gets shipped directly to your house through Amazon Prime. And you read the book and then return it to us and we add it to the library collection. So it's a, it's a great way to get what you need and get it quickly. So we're excited about that. We did it last year. We had $10,000, and we spent every single penny of that. And as you know, the infrastructure grant, which is on the agenda, we were awarded $6,569,942 in matching funds, again, a very specific amount. And we match it dollar for dollar. So information that came out today was that they issued a, another small batch of awardees. And now they have given away $314 million to 246 libraries across the state. And they're working on the next round. So they, they said they weren't going to give it all away right at the beginning. They were going to save some. So that's, that's great. And the council did approve our grant and agreed to match. And so we'll talk about that during the meeting. Because I have some information about that. And then I did apply on, with the Friends of the Library, the Friends of the Library and I applied for a Coachella Valley Spotlight Grant. We hope that we are awarded one of those 12 grants for $25,000. And that when we asked for money to support our accessing the past digital history collaborative, we think that that would be a perfect project for Coachella Valley Spotlight. It would be a great way to spotlight our accessing the past project and kickstart it again and get it going. Two more things real quickly. We are having a Halloween party next week. We invite all the families to come out. Adults can come too. It's free. It's open to all ages. It's Wednesday, October 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We'll have games, prizes, and candy. So wear your costume. Our theme is heroes and villains. But you can dress up like in what you like. And then I was going to mention Pride on the Page, but Julie Warren has some events she would like to highlight too. So I'm going to pass the baton.
Thank you, Jeannie. Yeah, no, I just wanted to re-let everyone know that we do have our virtual author events. These have been going really great. And so we have a selection every month, different authors, some bestsellers, some nonfiction. You know, some talking about important issues of today. So we have some great ones coming up in November. We have Bonnie Garmis, and she's talking about Lessons in Chemistry, her latest book. And then we have Kwame Christian, who's talking about how to have difficult conversations about race. So lots of great topics and authors coming up. So those are all virtual events, so you can attend from your home or anywhere. And then we're also going to have a greeting card making series on Saturdays, starting in November. You do have to sign up in advance because we are buying supplies. But the first one's going to be on Saturday afternoon, November 12th, and then there'll be one in December and one in January. So if you are very feeling crafty and love to make things, kind of make some greeting cards. And it'll be a fun afternoon to spend and getting to know other crafters in our area. And then lots of other great, you know, we continue our book clubs, and we have Mahjong classes, open play. So if you're a Mahjong player, you could come and play with a whole bunch of other people here at the library, and many other things. So please continue to check out our events on our events page at the library. Thank you.
Questions of trustees or staff? Okay, I have two questions. With the Zip Books, with your $24,005, I guess, how long would that get us through? Will that get us for a full year, do you think, or? Because it's a great program.
We'll have to make it work, or ask for more pledges from other donors, or the Friends, or the trustees of the foundation. But right now, we've spent 3400, no, $20,000, $2,400 since. When was that? At least in July? We start, we didn't start right away. In a couple of months, we've spent September, September. In one month, we spent $2,400.
Okay.
10 months. So it'll, it'll be a squeaker.
Okay. If you can keep us up to date on, but we can keep that program going. The other question is, you had the Mahjong was today. How many showed up for that?
Ah, yes. We had a full class today. All eight positions were filled and all eight people attended. And then our November introductory class is now also full. So with eight players. But if you're interested, reach out to me. And if I get enough other interest for a third introduction class, we might be able to add something in early December. But we are having two open plays, one on Friday, October 28th, and then one on Tuesday, November 22nd. And those are open play. Anyone can come. We'll have a Mahjong set, and people could bring their own sets and practice with each other. So yeah. And then probably in the new year, we'll look to doing some more advanced classes too, if we have enough interest.
Great. I referred that to a number of my friends, so hopefully, they were able to make the important eight that you selected.
It's fun. I've taken the class in the past, and it's fun.
It's a great opportunity. Roman numeral six, treasurer's report, Al?
Yes. I always refer to pages 10 and 11 in our agenda, the summary sheets, without the detail. But essentially, there's not really much to report. We did, there is reduction to 46,000. That was the foundation debt. And other than that, Jeannie, you reported that they had finally reconciled some of the accounts and collapsed and the rest and cleaned it up that we've been looking forward to for some time. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to point out in particular about that. But essentially, the budget is right on track where we are. So.
Yeah, you're exactly right. They did consolidate.
For the people that don't have a packet, Al, what's our balance right now?
Oh, the balance, I'm sorry. It's 1.817,275,066. So 1.817,275.66 is the balance.
Right. Thank you. Any questions from trustees for Al at this time? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the report?
I'll make the motion. Oh, nope, David made it first. I saw him. His hand went up.
Okay. Thank you, David. All right, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Ed McBride. You're on mute. Ed.
He's still muted.
You know what? He no longer is president. He just simply disregards us.
No. Shutting down the shop right now. There's a lot of noise in the background. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, and David Norgard.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Roman numeral seven, discussion items. Discussion item A, Discussion of Memorandum of Understanding between Trustees and Foundation Report of Meeting with City Attorney by Borben McBride. Ed, would you take the handle here, please?
Sure, sure. So and I can't remember if we, did we discuss this last time, or is this a new item?
No.
Okay.
No, we haven't discussed it with them.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I just have the date here in front of me, and I can't find it. Jeannie, you remember the day we had the meeting with the city attorney? Jeannie set up a meeting with the city attorney, with Craig, myself, and we started the discussion of how we need to pull together a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the trustees and the library foundation. You may recall, we decided that we needed some sort of a tool that would outline how we work together, and as simple things as raising money, giving money to the city, asking the foundation to raise money for us on certain projects. So those are all things that we wanted to meet with the city attorney and talk about how we should move forward. Luckily for us, the city attorney has recently done something very similar with the Plaza Theater in the group that's raising money for the Plaza. So they have a template that they are dusting off, and they're going to use that as kind of a guide. And they asked us to submit right there in the meeting, you know, some things that we would want to see included. And so we, we kind of did a brainstorming where we came up with several things that we would like them to explore and flesh out as part of this MOU. And then the plan is they will bring it back to this committee and make sure it has what we want. And of course, then it will come to the full board for your review, your input. And finally, your approval. Then we would submit to the library foundation board for them to do what they need to do to it. I think this is really critical, because this also includes things like naming authority. So if the foundation wants to go out and sell names to the building, or names to rooms, or names to chairs, we need to have a process identified and how they do that. We also wanted to make sure that, should we say, hey, foundation, we would like for you to go out and raise money for an endowment? Or we'd like for you to go out and raise money for this particular project. It's how do we do that? But I think most importantly, and I think the foundation will appreciate this more than anything, it will provide an outline slash template on how the foundation would come to us and say, you know, we would like money from the trust fund, for example, and what that would look like. You know, what does that report look like? What is it, what must it contain for us to evaluate? You know, what would we use in that proposal to evaluate the success of giving them money? All those kinds of things that we struggled with not too long ago with their request. We're going to make sure that's in there for them, so that when they come to us, you know, they have an outline of, here's what you, you guys need from us for this request to be reviewed and approved in a timely manner. So I'll stop there and see if Craig, you or Jeannie have anything you might want to add.
Jeannie?
I was just going to say that we are going to regroup
I've got it here.
Early November, before the next board meeting, to go over a proposal or a draft, if you will.
So if it's going to be early in November, I'm assuming we're going to get closure on this probably in January. Because we're going to review what they give us, then we're going to give it to the foundation, have them review it, get it back to us, and then we'll bring it back to the trustees.
Yeah.
Does that sound right, Jeannie and Ed?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be ready to go to the foundation about that time, don't you? I mean, so that they can do their part. They'll, they'll want to do some things. Or are you thinking that they'll have their input by then too?
Well, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to review the document after we meet with the attorneys one more time and share that with the trustees. So that would be our December meeting. And then, oh, shoot, we're looking at February then, I'm sorry. Because we'll give it to the foundation in January. And then they'll get back to us in February.
Yeah.
If the draft, yeah, optimistically, if the draft is good. Meeting, but you guys might want to work it over a little bit more than that. So, yeah.
Right. But I'm thinking the soonest turnaround will be February. But I also want to let David know that we're reviewing this, and obviously, we're going to put the time into this. David, are you okay with that timeline?
Yeah, it sounds long to me, but, you know, that's okay.
Okay. Well, I think we want to get it done right the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then we can probably replicate this document that they're giving us for the future also. Okay? Okay, that brings us let's see. Because that's more of an information item, Jeannie, than a voting item.
Right.
So everybody okay with that? It's leaving that as an information item?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's go to Roman numeral seven, B, Infrastructure Grant Award, Discussion of Library Renovation, Scope of Work, Presentation of Items Funded and Not Funded, Director K, you're going to address this. And Michael, again, if you're still on, thank you for your input earlier in our meeting. Okay, Jeannie?
Yeah, and then I wanted to, I'll share the, the board packet. You can find all of our information on the city's website. It's, we've got everything online. So let me share. I'm just going to share the the PDF of the board packet. So it's, it's not a full PowerPoint or anything, but you can see it. So I, the question came up last month, that, you know, can we, can we talk about some of the things that are funded and not funded? And what's involved in this project? Now that the grant, like Michael Herschel did say, and he's absolutely right, the grant funds, infrastructure, there is a lot, there are a lot of things that are not covered. But let me tell you about this. So we got it, we got awarded $6.5 million. Just, it's easier to say 6.5 million than all of that. The city actually budgeted and in their five-year capital improvement project, they budgeted $7 million, because we thought we were asking for $7 million, but the math came back 6.5. So that's the number that's listed under Measure J is 7.06 million. Our project has to be completed by March of 2026, and we have to spend the money hand in hand with the state and the grant. So it will all be spent together and put together as one, one account essentially. This number did change, the 234 projects, now it's 246. Out of these 234 that, when I ran this report, we were the number 11 most funded library out of all of the projects. So I was very happy about that, very proud that they saw what we see in our project. Our the, the items that are covered on this grant are fire sprinklers, fire alarm, emergency egress, and emergency generator, new, we need to replace the ceiling because we're going to put in new sprinklers. With the pandemic, there's been a, a demand and a need or recognizing a need for air filtration system. That's wonderful. Security system with closed caption TV and alarm system. Like I said, the emergency backup generator. Our skylights, we need some safety issue on those. Bless you. Our skylights, uh, we need some safety issue on those, plus you, uh, some railings and fall protect, for protection anchor point, points added. Our air conditioner HVAC needs to be replaced, all of the terminal and package units that go with that. Everything electrical, there's not much, um, glamour in this, and a seismic retrofit. Um, continuing, uh, roof replacement, replace carpet and floors, um, window replacements, our single pane windows, replacing all of the water lines, including all of the plumbing, uh, painting for preventative maintenance, uh, replacing any interior signage, ADA tactile signage, larger fonts visually impaired. And non-emergency lighting and replacing interior doors and locks and inclusive access. Um, some of those items are because the, the doors are heavy here and, um, we need to replace. Now, uh, what's not included are, um, all the beautiful things that we think of when we think of a library. Uh, furniture, the fixtures, including the countertops, any shelving, all of the steel shelving that's out in the library. Uh, that's not included. Um, that shelving is original nineteen seventy-five, some of it's been added on. And so there, we've got some different shades of fifty shades of orange in here. Um, the, uh, any equipment and technology, computers, um, for the public, computers for staff too. Um, anything exterior is not included also, including landscaping, parking lot expansion. And expansion in general is not included. Any extra amenities, if we were to have any sort of children's play areas or, um, art galleries or any exhibits or any anything extra. Um, study rooms are not included, um, koi pond replacement or any new event spaces. So these are not, um, items that are not included. And, uh, the question came up from trustee McBride about uh, what, what was, um, what was the input from the past? Because we have, um, been waiting for a while for a renovation. So we've done a lot of this work already. And in fact, I, uh, I've been here ten years and when I first started, that was the thing, is this library was gonna get renovated. Ten years and, um, and there have been studies done in two thousand and five. And this one in particular that you're seeing on your screen is from twenty thirteen. And we did community input sessions with, uh, we did a special group just for teens. We did, uh, multiple ones with the public. And I don't know if anybody remembers the, 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 this, uh, with the stickers. Um, you were given, I think you might have been given, I don't know, six stickers or four stickers. I don't remember, but you were given, uh, not, not enough to cover everything. But you were given some stickers and you, and they asked you, the consultants asked, what are the areas that you think are important? Um, whether it's spacious and inviting, comfortable seating, acoustically zone, natural light, embracing technology, celebrate art, connecting to the outdoors and street presence. So the, they combined all of that information and this is from a presentation that was given to city council in twenty thirteen. And the number one item was that we embrace technology, followed by comfortable. I mean, they're all great. Obviously, we want everything that's listed here. We want it to be, we want zones where people can have quiet study space, but also places where children can play and, and feel um, like they can be themselves and have a good time. So, um, that is part of the history of what has been done. And I, um, in my professional opinion, uh, I, I was on, I, you, you all might not realize this, but, um, but I worked at the Palm Desert Library. We did a renovation and I was the city librarian for Palm Desert during that renovation. So, um, I've been through this, uh, with this fill, with the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library and with the Palm Desert Library. So I have been a part of these projects before. So some of the next steps that need to be done, we need to develop the scope of work for the architects. Um, and the city has already said they want to do a nationwide, um, R F P, a nationwide search for architects. So, um, it's not just gonna be local, local architects who see this project. Um, the R F P team will, um, review the proposals and give recommendations. City council will select the architect. Then we begin the design and development, create the plans, create detailed construction. But actually, the detailed construction request for proposal will be created. Then they select the contractors. We will, I am hopeful that everyone agrees that we need to move to a temporary site because working during phasing is really horrible. And, and then construction will, will move out and have a temporary like library. We might have multiple libraries, temporary locations throughout town. Like many branches and most of our stuff will be in storage and then go to construction and do it quickly and efficiently. And celebrate. Um, I wanted to, this is a question to the us about all the detailed information. It's in your packet about the, the grant, what was requested and why and the budget. So, um, the, one of the, um, the most important things that's come to me from the, um, the city's engineering department is that we need to be realistic. So I'm gonna stop sharing at this point. And we can talk about that, but I think, I think it makes sense. We need to be realistic and, um, and see what we, what can we do. And I think what we can do is we can stay within the footprint of this building. It's almost thirty-four thousand square feet. It's a really good sized library. It's, um, might be the largest in the valley. If not, it's really one of the top largest buildings, um. The Palm Desert Library, if you take the, the building with the, um, Palm Desert Library is twenty thousand square foot. The cathedral city is twenty thousand square feet, but the, the C O D Palm Desert building together when they were two, that was about forty-three thousand square feet, but we have a great building. It's just things are in the wrong place. And I think that the plan that we did in twenty thirteen was actually a great plan and we just didn't have the money to do it. So if we did something similar or look at it in, with today's eyes to say, well, what, what works now with, um, with the way technology is and the way the pandemic and placement of rooms and what we, what we need right now. I think that, um, we could make that really a beautiful place. So.
Yes. So a question, Ginny, I, had we budgeted at any time, uh, funds to address the, um, infrastructure that's being covered from this grant? Um, and only reason I ask is we all know how budgets work. If we had already out, had identified that this was a priority, we were gonna pay for it out of whatever budgetary, and now it's come in with the grant that's gonna cover it, that then would release the money that we had allocated for that for some other purpose. I guess that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. Did, was there anything that had, uh, been designed to cover some of that infrastructure? Um, programs that, uh, now the grant's gonna cover that releases the money back to us to, to redirect elsewhere?
Not specifically. I know, um, the city, when we were doing, we were doing the grant application and we were talking about this project. We had already scheduled the meeting to talk about, um, uh, the R P process for we had talked about the scope of the project. We start, we scheduled the meeting and it's kind of funny, we were gonna have that meeting anyway because we were like, we have to do something. The money hadn't been officially, it hadn't been doubled, you know, so, so the city said, we, we, we're applying for this grant. We know we have to match the funds. And so they budgeted the matching portion.
Alright.
And said in the, in the five-year plan, which, um, you can see in the measure J.
Okay, alright.
Of your plan. It, it was just that they said it was grant funded.
Right, no, okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Uh, Ginny, with, what the funding they're allowing us to do, can we move walls?
It depends on what the architects say. I mean, uh, I am not sure. It depends on the walls too. Because, uh, in our twenty-third plan, we had two options. One, uh, one moved a wall or one moved a column and we had to create a supporting wall. And then one did not and the cost, uh, there were different things. And I know Michael Hirschman's an architect and there, there are just things that trigger. So if you move a wall, you might have to have a support system set.
But we're not restricted from doing that.
No, you know, we could, what, oh, I see what you're saying. So, um, justification of, as an example, moving the restrooms. Because this grant, uh, fixes up the restrooms, but our restrooms are not ADA compliant. They're not big enough. They can't go where they are now. So,
Right.
A hundred percent certain that we could justify moving the restrooms to a new location, which will then trigger a domino effect of what, what and what goes where they were. So, that's what you're asking, maybe?
Yes, yeah, that is. I just don't want to be so, uh, restricted that we're gonna end up with the exact same space we have now, just with better electricity and plumbing.
Exactly. I think David Norga had his hand up first, so.
Yeah.
Um, uh, thanks Craig, Ginny. Ginny, first I just want to say, uh, once again, congratulations on the award of this grant. This is a big deal. Uh, we're all grateful for it and it's very exciting because it allows us to move forward. And, uh, I think we, uh, are all very grateful for that. Um, I do have two questions. And, um, I'm looking at pages twenty and twenty-one of the presentations that you, or of the packet, I should say. Um, my first question is this, one of two questions. Um, you noted and, and mentioned that the project needs to be finished by March twenty twenty-six. What really means finished at that point? There, you know, that could be defined as started or everything done and, you know, the, the key turned or the ribbon cutting, what, or somewhere in between. Um, what are we talking about exactly?
The California State Library said, the project that is in the scope of this project has to be done. And the money has to be spent. So, uh, they're, they're, they're saying get on the ball right now and get working on this. Cause they, uh, they don't want to issue extensions. So,
Okay.
Now.
So, that would imply we need to be, uh, moving forward at a, at a deliberate pace.
Yes, absolutely. But it, let's say that we, um, come up with, I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dream too big, but let's say that we decide that we need to expand the parking lot. And that's not included in this project. Now that, all of the things that are not included can happen after March twenty twenty-six.
Right.
We could, we could finish all of the hard construction and then at that point, if we're still, if we're, if we're running late, then we can move in after that and we could buy all the furniture. The furniture needs to be ordered away in advance, by the way, but, you know.
Right, sure.
Everything on this list has to be done and signed off.
Well, what the state is funding needs to be done by March twenty-six, not the, not every little chair and, and.
Absolutely right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to move back in by March twenty twenty-six. It'd be great if we could, if, it'd be great if we could be so efficient that we were done, but.
Well, sure, yeah.
Let's shoot for twenty-four.
We want to do it right, so.
And ask a quick follow-up question. I mean, the, the, this has to be done expeditiously. Who is responsible? What is the next step? Who takes the lead on this? Is it with the city? That they have to go out with the R F P for the arc? I mean, I, 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 I'm kind of at a loss of who's doing what and where the responsibility falls. And if it's outside of the library board, which I'm assuming it is, who oversees to make sure they stay on the ball?
Our city's engineering department takes this on as the project and they are the ones in charge of all of it. But, um, the, uh, we have a procurement and contracting department and they, we all work hand in hand to craft the scope of work and the R F Ps and, but, so they manage.
You're gonna, you're gonna stay on top of it, in other words, to move them forward so that the ball doesn't get dropped. I guess that's really what I'm trying to get at. Uh, the responsibility falls to you as the library director then to make sure that they stay on track so that we don't lose any of the money and we stay within the, the terms of the agreement.
I think the county, um, John Van Hoy called me like a chihuahua or something one time because I don't let it go.
Good.
You gotta get it done. Gotta get it done.
That's what I wanted to hear, alright.
So Ginny, uh, back to my second question. Uh, I'm now on page twenty-one. Uh, you mentioned all the items that the state grant covers. And I just want to check an assumption I have here, uh, to make sure it's right. We're really talking about a renovation of the existing building. We are no longer talking about the possibility of a new building there or elsewhere. Is that, is that correct?
That's right. I, I mean, yeah, we, we were all like, what do we do now? This is where we are and we're gonna make it great. It's gonna be beautiful.
I, I don't ask that to imply any sort of disappointment about that, but just in prior months, we had talked about, you know, the other possibilities. And so I just wanted to kind of have that stated in our meeting that we're talking about renovating the existing building.
Yeah, I think David, the money that they gave us automatically restricts us to the building.
Right, I, I would assume so.
I will tell you, the only loophole is if someone comes in here and condemns this place.
Yeah.
Then, uh, that's the only the only thing that would go completely sideways. If we, if, if the engineers or architects or somebody came in here and said, whoa, there's, this is not fixable.
Right.
We have to go back to the state and revise our grant. But that, that's, it was, it was an option that some people, I know one library burned to the ground in a, in a wildfire. So, they're gonna get a new library. So that, that is one of the things that triggers it.
Sure, sure. Alright, thank, thank you very much. Thanks, Craig.
We can do something with the utilities, can't we, Ginny? That allows us, if we're gonna add another building on, that we can tie into the utilities because they're designed for another building to come in. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, my radio is going off. I say that.
Okay. I'm wondering if, when we look at the utilities, the plumbing, the electricity and, and that type of stuff, that we can keep in mind that we might want to add another building and that we designed this stuff for this building so that it can be added on to later on.
I, maybe. I'm not sure. This building has been added on, you know, a few times. So it's got, you know, the front entrance where we, where we have our main entrance now. It used to be a patio and the T-zone used to be a patio. So we've got electrical panels all over this building. So, I mean, it's not impossible, but, um.
Just wondering if we can add electrical panels that can handle more like, bring in more electricity so that we could add another building and not be restricted.
I think they would probably say it's not advisable. They would probably just say, just, just build that as a new standalone.
Okay. Ed, Ed, you have a question?
Uh, I have, I have, um, probably more questions, more comments than questions. So Ginny, I think that one of the things that is really missing from where we are right now is the money that we worked really hard to continue the planning process for any renovation or modification to the building. And I don't see that, or is that somewhere in the budget? Because I, I think that for this, this body and for you, I, I, if we're talking about a full departure from what we've been talking about in the last few years about potentially changing the building. I think we need to have a reset to the community because I think the community is going to be very confused, upset. If all they see is, you know, that building doesn't change and they walk in and there's a new wall somewhere. And I think that that's worth an investment if we can find the money to do that. Because I, I agree that if you're saying we need to live within these walls, that gives us, that, that gives us a goal. We just need to reset that and find out from our community what those walls are gonna look like now and what we need to put in there as a program. Now granted, you've got enough, enough previous studies to fill that library building. So you, you've done it, but it's a good start because I, I think that there's gonna be people saying, I'm already, people are saying to me, oh, congratulations on the money. You know, I can't wait to see that building torn down or I can't wait to see an addition added to that building. I think we've got to do a reset and I'll be the first one to get up and tell city council this, that if our new budget has, is now established, we need a reset and we need input from the community. That's my first comment. Second comment that I think irregardless, you know, even if we go through a planning process, we're gonna come up with a laundry list of things that maybe was safe within the scope of this new project. I think that there are still gonna be items that this project will not cover. And I, that's why I asked for this measure J. Cause the measure J in the next fiscal year is still. Cause the measure J in the next fiscal year still has five point eight million dollars that they have been talking and promising to us for years. I don't know if we are, I don't think we should walk away from that. I think that we should pursue that. And I think we need to pursue it now because I think that, and, and by the way, there will be no surprise in city hall about that. Because if we're gonna have to do a very rushed accelerated, to meet the state requirements. We, we can't finish the state requirements and sit there and go, oh, wait a minute, we, we've got five point eight million. Now what are we gonna do? I mean, the, the, there's got to be together. It's gotta be a continuation of that project. So I think that that is something that. You know, I urge you as the leader of the organization to say, okay, guys, you know, we got it. We got money to fix the, the bathrooms finally. We got money to make sure the infrastructure doesn't cave in in a major earthquake. All great things. But what about the rest of the money we've got here? And how far can we take that to meet community expectations? Because I think if you don't do that, it's, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna be in trouble as a body because people are gonna be disappointed that something else. We don't try to do some, now, I heard you say, Jeannie, that furniture. I don't see where furniture, where's furniture gonna come from? I don't see furniture in this budget. I don't see. You know, a coffee shop. I don't see any of those things that we've all talked about, but I see five point eight million dollars. That could go towards that. Plus, we are ready to raise money for those things as well if we have to. So I will, I'll get off my soapbox because. I, you know, I think I'm entitled to that because I led that committee to, to kinda lead the decision about where we're gonna locate it. What do we do? I mean, what, have you thought about that and what's next, Jeannie?
Well, the five point eight million is the matching funds and that's. It's, the math doesn't add up exactly right, but the. No.
Fifteen million dollars is what the budget is, right?
So the line is horizontal. So what, what did you say, Ed?
Okay, so the state, yeah, read this form to us. So.
Let me share this, right? Let me share this to you, for you. So this is the five-year capital improvement project program from engineering. And as you look horizontally, Fund Two Sixty-One is a grant account. And they've got it split up over two fiscal years.
Okay, okay.
Two sixty is the measure J fund, which is actually city money, the same amount. So, and the numbers are about seven million. Because we thought we were gonna ask for seven million and it turned out we asked for six point five. So. The.
What's the rest of the money from those next years? Remember, measure J went out five years. Where is that money?
It's not in here. They, this is a living document and they said year one is the only one that's been officially approved. By the city, so. This is what they're proposing, but they haven't built in the rest of the years or.
So what do we need to do to not let them forget that money? You know, I, I think that, that's my point is that. Measure J had provided future funds for this project. And everyone was in favor of that and the city had said all along, oh yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do something. Are, are you saying to us tonight that the city is saying, this is it? There'll be no more future funds. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying this is all they have officially approved. I'm not saying that they haven't, do anything else, but this is, this is what we have.
It's just the way they budget. It's, it's an annual budget. They're just not projecting out into the future is how I read it.
Either that or they, they're not projecting out for us.
But you understand that even if we meet the deadline for the state. We can't sit here and wait for money that, I think we need to start confirming, is there future money coming from the city? They've got to share that with us. If there's not, okay, we, we live with that and the community has to know it. But if they're saying sure, then what are they gonna do? I mean, I don't, that's, that's probably, that's probably my biggest question is what happens? If they say, oh yeah, we're gonna still give you that measure J money, how does that impact the project?
Good point, Ed. And the other thing is, look where we'd be if we didn't have the state grant. We'd be back to, you know, seven, seven million dollars. So, yeah, I think we should talk them to find out what the projection is for the future. And that'll help our decisions for now.
Wanted to have her hand up too.
Alright.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused because even before this grant came along. Measure J was already going to give us money for the library. That was separate. So now what I'm understanding is that measure J money is now being lumped in with the matching. Of the grant. And to me, that should be a whole separate thing. And my worry is that we're gonna start making these changes to the library, upgrading the library. And then this other money, oh, now we've got this other money. And we're gonna be doing, maybe not double the work, but we are going to have to be redoing things that we've already done during the upgrade. In order to add the things that the library needs or wants that would make it more efficient. So it just seems to me like that money needs to be here now. Included in the budget so that we can make the changes, the upgrades, that, what, the things that we need, that the grant doesn't allow us to do. So that we're not doing things twice or, or having to come back and redo something because now we have. This other five million dollars to add the study rooms, to put in the, the conference rooms or whatever it is that, that. That we want in our plan. And I really, I mean, I took a picture of that slideshow. That the city presented saying that that money was coming to the library for measure J. I mean, it's documented, so I just don't understand how it can just be absorbed into this matching grant. That doesn't seem right to me.
Here, here.
I wanted to mention to you, Ed, I know you asked, mentioned input from the community. That is one thing that is. Not included in the, the budget. There's, it's not included in the grant, the, or. Uh, community input program or community gathering. But I will tell you on, in your packet on page twenty-nine. Planning, design, other pre-construction implementation and consulting fees are included. So that's great. Cause that's expensive. And I think we budgeted one point four million or something for that.
Very good. I mean, we've got to do a re, you know, here's, guys. If, if we're now saying that the money that the city had been waving in front of us for measure J has evaporated. I think we, we can't roll over. I think that we as a body need to raise our hand to the city council and, and say. No, 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 no. We, we need you to continue down the path of giving more money to this project. And we're, we're on a quick timeline here in order not to lose that money from the state. I think, I think we have to give it one last push if nothing else. Or if we are, and they say, sorry, that's it, no more money. By the way, I was told there was plenty of money to be spent for this project. So before we went after a matching grant. So I think that they've cut back because they got some state money possibly. Or maybe we just don't know the full story. I'm gonna give them the benefit because I know that the mayor and my last conversation with her. It was committed to making the library a better place. So I, I just don't think that they've just given up. And gonna take the state money, match it and off we go and let's be happy with what we got. Because our community. Myself, I will say, I want some new bathrooms. We need some new bathrooms. But there's a hell of a lot more on that list that I wanna see for our library, not just better bathrooms. I mean, that's not gonna put us in the twenty-first century of libraries, having ADA compliant libraries. That's actually the nineteenth century, for God's sakes. So I think that we've got, we've got to, to. Clarify that and start having some conversations. And I know, Jeannie, that's our role. You know, as citizens and people volunteering here, I think that we can't let that money slip away. And have you just accept this is all we're gonna get because I, I just don't think that's right. I just don't.
Um, what about setting up a meeting to meet with Lisa?
Absolutely. Let's invite her.
I did have a meeting with her too, but I, I, I haven't, well, I see Bill has his hand up and I have a.
Yeah.
Suggestion too, but let's.
Go ahead, Jeannie, you're way more important than me.
No, no, I wanna hear what you have to say.
Well, what I have to say is that I've been out here in Chicago for the season here and I'm. Ready to get back to Palm Springs, but I've been following every morning in the desert sun and talking to. People that are my friends there and being on all the meetings. And what was represented to the community. And the population in, in Palm Springs is that there was fourteen point one million dollars. That was allocated by the city through measure J and the capital improvement projects. And that Jeannie Kayes and her team at the library had gone out to solicit. Through a grant from the state of California for an improvement grant. And you went for ten million and you were awarded six point five. That's what the community understands, the commitment from the city and the state. And what the foundation is looking for, having talked with David and, and the board, we're looking to. How do we determine beyond what? Or what, Jeannie, what you said was not included in, in those grants. How, how can we determine what that, sort of that number is? So we can put a number on our goal, our tactical goal, to raise. And add to the, the fourteen point one and the six point five. And then the third thing is, we have a building that was built and designed by William Cody. I mean, this is one of the most important architects. A lot of people don't like that particular design. But my understanding was that the city went through this, a lot of gyrations. For a couple of years and decided that that building needed to be seated there. And that we needed to improve that. So let's get beyond these things and let's get on with things. I mean. Yes, you can get a restroom done by the, by, you know, twenty twenty-six. But what, what do we wanna do visionary-wise as a city in Palm Springs? You know, so anyway, my frustration with the bureaucracy, I'm sharing with you, Jeannie. And if anything that we can do to help you on that, we will. And I know David and the rest of the foundation board members, and I, I'm sure the friends. Echoes that, whatever we can do to accelerate that or help that, we wanna do that. So. Anyway.
Alright, thank you for your comments, Bill. Comments from others, please?
I have a comment. I just wanna echo what Ed said and remind everybody on the, remind the trustees and Jeannie. How much work the citizens and these individual groups have done. To get us to this point. I mean, Jeannie, obviously you did the heavy lifting to get the grant. But I mean, remember, let's think back at the focus groups that library strategies did and the meetings with the city stakeholders. I just wanna emphasize that if we just redo the bathrooms and put in new carpet and, you know, paint the library. We're gonna have a lot of people that are really pissed off. You know, we have to think big and we have to push the city to think big. And the only reason the foundation exists is to fill that gap. So we can think big. I mean, if we run ten million dollars over budget, we have a big project that we can do. You know, I mean, if we need to get the bathrooms done and all the thing rewired and the fire alarm done before March twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, then let's do it. But if we wanna build a cafe and add on and redo the parking lot and do all the stuff that's gonna make that library the envy of the world. Then let's do it. And I, I just wanna. I'm just saying what I just said, that's all. But we can't forget, we just can't forget what we did. You know, all the stuff leading up to this. You know, that we, we've done a lot of work and we can't just let the city steamroll it and then say, well, we got the grant, we gotta do what we gotta do. So we're just gonna do it. We can't let that happen.
Here, here, David.
Thank you.
I'm also concerned about the timing. We're having some elections in the city of Palm Springs. I, I don't know how that's going to affect this either, because I'm wondering if the new council members, if some new ones, well, there's gonna at least be one new one elected. They're gonna say, well, I didn't make that commitment. I'm, I'm concerned about that. So I don't know, anybody else has any comments related?
I have asked everybody on that slate of officers what their commitment to the library is. I even put them on the spot at a forum and asked all of them to respond. And every one of them, I'm, you know, now, they were, they were standing before the news cameras, I will give you that. But every one of them said that they do believe that we need a, a new library. Not new library, that, that's not defined, but that the money that was won by this, by Jeannie. And what the city needs to commit, I think they're all committed to that. And as I said earlier, I know the mayor is, cause Mike, she was, she was for a long time our contact. And she was one of our biggest supporters. So I, I think that, you know, I think this warrants a conversation with either all of us. Or a select number of us, Craig, to sit down with her and say, oh my gosh, isn't it great that we've got some money? And isn't it great that you're gonna give us some more money? But hey, what about the rest of that check that's due to us in the next years? Because guess what? We need that money now because we gotta get this project underway. I wanna say to, to, something Bill said. Having gone through building projects, Jeannie, you have too. We can't have twenty, was it twenty-four, come and we go, okay, we're done. Oh, by the way, we've got another bunch of money. Now let's shut it down again and do upgrade. All this has to happen at the same time. So we can't sit here and wait for that money to happen in future years. Because that building will be closed for eight years if we're not careful. And we just can't allow that to happen. So I think that's why it is urgent. That we remind them that we need a commitment on where's the rest of this money. And so that we can, we can re-scope what we have to do. Now, by the way, they may not give us every penny they gave us or promised us. But by God, we need to ask for it. And I think we need to let them know it's gotta come from somewhere. And, and I've heard from them, oh, we've got the money. The money's there. We've got lots of money. Well, okay, give us some finally. How long we waited, for God's sakes?
Uh, if you look at page twenty-six. Jeannie put together next steps. And I'm looking at the first bullet there, city develops scope of work. I don't think we can do that until we have a meeting to find out what, where the funds, if there's additional funds for us to make it that scope. So I, I would like to propose, and if the, the other trustees are, are okay with this. That Ed and I meet with the mayor to find out what her vision is. Uh, what we can expect from measure J and that maybe they have. Uh, the money granted to us there, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeannie, it's for twenty-three, twenty-four? Is that right?
Let me change the screen right here. Yeah, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three is four point one million and twenty-three, twenty-four is two point nine million.
Okay, then, Ed, we, we'd still be staying in our project if we asked, okay, so what happens twenty-four, twenty-five?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then we can, then we can start addressing the scope of work because the scope of work may change the money we're spending right now.
I like that, I like that approach. I think you should do that.
Okay, David, Juanita?
I agree also. I think that's a very good idea.
I think we have to do it. I don't think we have any other choice. I think it has to be done.
Okay. Jeannie, obviously I want to include you in that too. If you can maybe set up a date, I would probably be mobile. The early part of November. Maybe the middle of November might be better. I don't know what your schedule is, Ed?
I'm around. I don't leave until Thanksgiving Day and then I'm only gone for a few days.
Okay, so. And then maybe we, the three of us can talk before we meet with the mayor, discuss what our objectives are, what our issues are. So that we're not wasting her time.
And I'll include the city manager, the interim city manager, Teresa Galivan.
Okay. What's the status of that? Do you know yet, Jeannie? Is there any movement on that?
I don't know right now.
Well, the question would be maybe for the mayor, I don't know, or maybe we should, I mean, we don't know what. Well, we were two or three weeks away, but the mayor pro tem might be also someone that we might want to invite to that meeting as well. Assuming that she is real. Assuming that she is reelected, she will be the mayor here before long, right? So maybe we should ask, you know, Mayor Middleton what she thinks about that, or is there another city council member that we should include? In this discussion.
Yeah, good suggestion, Ed. Clear as mud, Jeannie?
No, I know. And I was, I was going to say. You know, maybe talking to Measure J might be an option as well because. They're, they are a large voice in planning their five year plan.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I've done that and I was told, we'll be happy when you come back and talk to us about having a plan. I said to all of them, we can't do a plan till we have some money. You know, you know what comes first, the chicken or the egg? So I'm happy to, for us to go talk to Measure J, but you know, I think that, you know, Measure J. We tried to get some, we tried to get a hundred thousand dollars out of them and what, look what they did to us. So I'm sorry if I'm bitter. I don't mean to be bitter. You know, tell me to shut up because I am being bitter. But I think that, I think that we go to the mayor first and if the mayor says, of course, I mean, yes, it's the plan. Then I think that there could be some conversation we're unaware of. If there's not, and she says, go talk to Measure J, I'm going to ask her to go with us. I mean.
And one thing I was going to suggest to or say, that is, that we, if we, if we've made this step. I feel like, I feel like it's reasonable for us to say. We can do a great library in the same footprint. And that is, that's a decision that we hadn't had before. We were all, like everybody said, we were like, well, we're going to get a new building, we're going to move next door, you know, we're going to expand all these things. But if we could say, we've decided that we're going to just stay within the footprint and make it great where it is. Then there's, then that's a plan. And maybe that's enough of a plan that people were looking for, but I.
Jeannie, I know that the city signs your paycheck and that you have to say that, with all due respect, and I'm okay with you saying that. You, you worked hard to get that money. If we not have that money, who knows where we'd be right now today? So I think it's okay for you to say that, but I also caution you that you've got a lot of supporters on this phone right now. But I think that you either have to say privately or to your boss or to the mayor. Hey, guys, there's a lot of expectations that we're going to go beyond and infrastructure. And I, I think we need to talk about that. I'm not saying that we reset expectations. Maybe that's what we have to do. It will be hard, but I, I don't think that needs to be borne by you. I think that we need some, we need somebody from higher up to say, sorry, guys, there is no more money. This is it. We're going to live with it. But you know, I, I appreciate what you're saying and I don't want to, I wouldn't jeopardize your position for anything. But I think that's where we come into play. We're your citizen advocates and I think we have to raise our hand and say, whoa, wait a minute. You promised us a hell of a lot more money than this. Where is it, Boncos? We need to see it. We need it now. You know, you don't have to say a word. There and smile. That's what you're supposed to do.
That's nice of you to say. I, I was part of the twenty thirteen plan and it's a good plan. But I know what you're saying and I, I appreciate that. And I think it's wonderful that you all are such great supporters. So I'll let you fight the fight.
I don't want to look behind me, not you standing there, by the way, you better be standing there. But I, you know, and I, but I think that you let us and the people that support you, we, we can raise this in a way as citizens. We pay our taxes here, we're part of this community and we've been a part of this project. I think it's our right and our responsibility to say, well, wait a minute, this, something doesn't seem right here. By the way, I am hoping that they all go, well, of course the money is still there, you know, yeah. And so that when you start getting into this project, there is more money for us to do more than what we see here now. So.
Okay, any further discussion on this? So the plan is, is to have Ed and I meet with the mayor. Ed, you also brought up mayor pro tem. So Jeannie. Let's maybe include the mayor pro tem if available. And then we'll set this, we'll set this meeting up.
But if you're talking now, yeah, if you're talking about mid-November, the election's going to be done on November fourth. So you're going to know whether who is a mayor pro tem or not, yes.
Well, no, it's a good point, Al, thank you.
Yeah, good point. So we'll set this meeting up for after the election time, just because I'll be mobile. I like to do this in person and not Zoom.
Actually, the election's November eighth.
I'm sorry, you are correct, eighth. I don't know what I was thinking.
And then the new council is sworn in December fifteenth.
But even if we, we know, we'll know the results and we'll know potentially who the mayor pro tem would be.
Right.
Lisa's the mayor until the eighth of December, so I think we need to have that covered. And she's not going anywhere. She continues to serve for another year or so.
Well, and, and, well, if, if, if race by whatever hook and crook doesn't get reelected, and I certainly hope she does, Lisa will continue as mayor.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Wow.
Is that how it works? If, if we?
Yes, yes.
Yes, because we wouldn't have anyone who has been on council to become mayor pro tem.
So the first meeting they will reelect to is mayor pro tem and who was, he'll be the next mayor, right? Now, I, I think we just, I think we start with her and by that, what time we will know if we need to invite. Now, by the way, I assume that if, if council member Gardner is reelected. Then she will assume mayor at the, on the eighth of December, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct. She will.
And our meeting will be in November, so having the two of them there, I think would be to, obviously to our advantage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to them and to their assistants and work on.
Okay, so trustees, there's, there's a proposal for you. Ed made this proposal. I just articulated it again. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Juanita. Roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Oh, hell, yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for your input on that. Let's go to item C and item C seems to be a little bit more crucial now. Since we have the timeline on the other item.
What did we want to talk about on this one?
Well, I think we need to expedite it based upon if we're moving ahead on the library, you have no home.
Okay, let me share that, share my screen. This is, this is not part of your packet again. But this is from the Measure J Commission Five Year Capital Improvement Plan. And the J.C. Frye Building, it was actually the engineers recommended it. And I completely agree that we should do this building first. The J.C. Frye Building and yeah, it's, it, there's Albert Frey and then there's the J.C. Frye Building. They're not related, but this is like a French fry, I guess. Measure J has actually budgeted, again, this is in the next fiscal year, but they, they budgeted eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars to renovate that building. It's in the, it's plotted in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Again, the city hasn't approved that budget yet, but it's slated here.
That's too late.
Well, this year is almost, we're half done with this year right now, twenty two.
I'm hoping it was going to be in twenty two, twenty three.
I don't know, but it may take us that long to get, get our act together. If so, then they'll, they'll move it up and it's slated in twenty three, twenty four. And we, we could start the scope of work and start the city's portion of that, I'm sure, this year. And do the RFP and do the bids and the proposals and then open them and start the project, award the contract. And then sign the documents and start the project in July. So I think, I think it's realistic with the way that projects go. But it's scheduled, they want to do this one first. I agree. I think it should be done first. Because then they will have a home to go to.
Okay. So they, what's the status of this? There's no project manager or architect, correct?
There's a project number. No, there's nothing. It's project number eighteen dash seventeen. So this, and the first two numbers of the, of these projects. Year that they were started, the main library renovation project number sixteen dash zero eight. But we've been working on this project since twenty eighteen and I'm ready to go.
Yeah, the concern I have there, when I look at project priorities, it doesn't necessarily start one to three years. Well, if it goes three years. You're going to really be in a problem there.
And I think when we get the, we get all of this squared away with the main library and, and J.C. Frye. When we decide what we're doing, this can be firmed up. I, I think this is. I'm, I'm happy to see get a number on this one. There wasn't a number before or it got taken away, remember? Scraped away.
So, so Jeannie, once, what? At what point are you going to sit knee to knee with the city departments that are going to direct this project and start having these kind of conversations? Because irregardless of what we do, I mean, if you say to the, the engineers, you know, okay, we're ready to go. And they're going to say, well, I mean, part of the planning would be, where do you go? In the meantime, when the building is shut down, are they assuming you're going to be shut down and not open? Or are you, I don't know?
We'll figure that all out. Before I worked at the mall, at the Mall Brary, it was great.
Yeah, Saks Fifth Avenue store sitting there too. You could always move into something like that, I guess. There's probably lots of places around town you could find to go move to temporarily.
We could have to, you know, maybe community centers have a little corner for us.
Hey, listen, I've worked at a library that was portable trailers at one time in my, my career while we built a building. They put about, you know, in the back, about ten, about six, for us to open up as a branch to, to work at it. So there's all kinds of things, but that's money that goes away from this project, right? I, I think this is a good question. What, why can't we use that building and have it, have it ready for us?
Yeah, get it, I did get it ready and then, because it needs to be done anyway.
So since it has, since it has a number, can you push this thing through now or not?
As fast as I can push through the main library. So we're, we're all, we're, we're all on the same page on this one. We're all very eager to get these done and I think. You know, the engineer that I spoke with was, he made the recommendation that we do the Frye Building first. And that had been a, a suggestion before was that we get that one done so we have a place to go. For a temporary.
Are you including the friends on the interior design on this? Because I think they have some space needs that they want to be able to address.
Yeah, we've talked to them before and, and I've done a walkthrough. There's a rough, a rough sketch of what we need in that building. It's, it's just a really simple building. It's, it's a rectangle with three to four rooms and bathrooms. So we've already met with the engineers. Three or four years ago to talk about kind of what we needed and, and we have been working with the friends on that, so.
Okay.
It'll be a pretty simple building, but it's a really cute building because it's, it's from the sixties, so it's a mid-century modern. Look, it, it looks like that, that school administration building that's on the corner of Farrell and Berisso. So, yeah, this was just one of those things where I wanted to update you and mention that we want to, we would like to do this one first. For both of these projects, it would be, it would be great if our fundraising arms and all of you could maybe decide on a pledge. Or I think, I think for the main library would be where we need the pledge. This, the J.C. Frye Building, I think it can be completed with this eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Realistically, I think it can be done. But I, I'm hopeful that we could get some pledges for the main library, some commitment. You know, we say, hey, you know, the friends have, you know, the friends have decided that they want to pledge this dollar amount. For this project to help with the children's room. I know that was something that the friends had done in the past. The foundation could say, you know, we've, yeah, we've got a donor, we think can give us this amount. Maybe the trust fund has one point, what do we say, one point eight million? A lot of that can be pledged and that might be nice to have a commitment where we could add up all that money together. To help come up with the other items that we need.
I think this project needs to be on our list when we have our meeting with the mayor.
Yeah, I agree. Other trustees, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, let's move off.
Yes, sorry.
No, no motion there. We'll just proceed with that information. Item D, Jeannie?
Item D is, we do this every year, our library annual report. Let me open that on screen. There you go. My picture. Thank you to Julie Warren for writing. All of the content except for my little portion. But we gather up our statistics. Every year we kind of do, in your bylaws, you're required to send an annual report to the city council. And we at the library are required to report statistics to the California State Library. Which you can view online if you go to the California State Library's website and find statistics. And then you can do comparisons between our library and other libraries in the state. But we gather up statistics and we report them. And then we highlight a few events and things that were interesting to us throughout the year. So I present to you our annual report. And then we will present this to the city council as a receive and file item in a future.
Any questions from the trustees regarding the annual report?
Jeannie?
Yes.
Having read it, I don't see any surprises in this, but did I miss something?
No, but it's wonderful to, you know, our statistics at a glance are different than they used to be because of the pandemic. But we're, we still had a really good year. I'm very pleased with the amount of people who have come back. I will tell you, our ebook circulation is still, has gone crazy. It's better than it, than it was. I mean, I don't remember when it was pre-pandemic, but you know, yes, we. The numbers are low. If we checked out, used to check out about half a million items a year. We used to see two hundred and sixty thousand people a year, something like that. We used to have ten thousand people attend our programs. We did three hundred programs a year. We're gonna, we're slow walking back into that because number one, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. And number two, a lot, a lot of people aren't ready to return to in-person programming yet. So we're not seeing the numbers that we used to. But we're very happy with what we've got. So, you know, we're grateful to the community. They, they love us. A lot of people wrote us, sent us letters during the pandemic and said, you know, you, you kept me alive, you kept me going. Thank you. Thank you for your curbside service. Thank you for browsing for me and, and doing library recommendations and picking up stuff. So we just love, we just love our jobs and love working with the community.
I, I, I appreciate you saying what you just did in terms of the statistics. And I think we all certainly understand how the, the downward. Direction of these numbers arises from the COVID nineteen pandemic. We, we all get that. The, the worrisome side of me. Says in my head, oh, okay, we're going to give this report to city council. They'll be new and when we're talking about getting more money and making sure we have all the money that was arise to us. And they'll say, well, gosh, do you, you know, do you really need to go that far with your vision? I don't want that to happen, so I want to be aware of that ahead of time. Maybe this is a message really to the two who are going to go see the mayor.
Good point, David. Thank you. Other comments? Jeannie, is this a motion to approve to go forward?
Yes, we need a motion to approve your annual report.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ed. Can I have a second? Thank you, David. All right, Jeannie, roll call.
I made a second, did you? Wait a second, did you, am I coming through, by the way? Hello?
You're on mute, but I can hear you.
Oh, okay, that was weird. Okay.
You're showing on the screen as muted, even though you're.
That's what you get for picking on me.
Okay.
No worries. We'll just do the roll call and we'll all be good. Uh, Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
No, I'm here.
Al Jones?
Here, yes, I agree, yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
David Norberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're down to, uh, item eight, trustee staff comments and future agenda items. I don't see any hands up. Uh, Jeannie, anything you want to close with?
You guys are the greatest. Thank you so much. Um, I don't have any word yet on, um, new trustees. Um.
So that's good. We'll get to keep that.
And still, our next meeting is November ninth. It's a different day than normal. Um, we had a conflict, so. November ninth at five thirty P M. We're still virtual, as far as I know, we're still virtual.
Okay.
Go to our Pride on the Page event and, um. It's, the Pride on the Page event is going to be so wonderful because. Two days of free events and then the sharing glass event is only forty dollars. Support the foundation. We can do this.
Okay, any other comments? All right, appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody's input tonight. Everybody stay safe. Uh, we'll see you on the ninth and Ed, uh, Jeannie, let us know when we're meeting with the mayor.
Already.
All right.
Happy Halloween. Thank you, guys.